Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for October 28th, 2025. Thank you for being here tonight. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Barkava. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Suma Doria.
Here.
Thank you.
So we have Councilmember Barkava remote, obviously. And so I actually had selected him to lead the flag salute, so let's go ahead and have you do that anyway. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, whose liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have two proclamations tonight. The first one is Dutch-American Heritage Day, and I really struggled trying to figure out which council member should read that one, but I finally decided that Councilmember Nguyen-House was the one. And we have Hans Brinkhoff on behalf of the Dutch consulate and the Dutch-American community here to receive. If we can invite him to come sit up here. That's perfect. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief Tate. And happy National First Responders' Day to all of our police and firefighters here today as well. Whereas the national, sorry, whereas the relationship between the Netherlands and the United States of America is the longest unbroken peaceful relationship the United States has maintained with any nation, and whereas Americans and the Dutch have shared values of freedom, of tolerance, and opportunity since the earliest days of our history, with ties dating back to the early 17th century when the Dutch West India Company established New Netherland and its principal settlements, New Amsterdam and Fort Orange, known today as New York City and Albany. And whereas the Dutch people demonstrated their support for American independence during the Revolutionary War, and thousands of American soldiers later gave their lives in the liberation of the Netherlands during World War II, forging bonds of friendship and gratitude that endure to this day. And whereas generations of Dutch immigrants have enriched the United States with their language, culture, and creativity, contributing to our nation's progress in art and science, education, and public service. And whereas the Netherlands and the United States continue to share strong partnerships in trade, innovation, and sustainability, ties that extend to communities like Bellevue through collaboration in business, education, and culture. And whereas Dutch-American Heritage Day, celebrated each year on November 16th, honors more than four centuries of friendship between our nations and recognizes the many contributions of Dutch-Americans to our shared history and civic life. Now therefore I, Jared Nguyen-House, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 16th, 2025, as Dutch-American Heritage Day. You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm not an historian, nor a political guy, so I went back to my own period that I came from the Netherlands to the United States, as that was all about. I was born in 1942 in a city called Nijmegen, and in 1944, we were liberated by the American and Canadian troops. And then a half a year later, as they had to, and I hope you are familiar with the movie One Bridge Too Far, it took them half a year to get the northern part liberated. But by the end of the day, on May 5th, 1945, the whole country was back to freedom, and freedom we all like. In 1976, the celebration of the 200 years of America, I arrived in New York. And I happened to be part of the celebration on July 4th that year, and we had a parade of ships on the Hudson River, which was a big celebration. And we have to keep in mind that next year, our Dutch-American Heritage Day will be also 250 years like the country. I came to the United States as a employee of Holland America Line. Holland, America, Dutch, America, heritage. And Holland America Line was the biggest transporter of Heineken beer, very important, all the excellent cheeses, and of course, the tulips. And not only the tulips, but also the bulbs, as now they're growing the bulbs here in Mount Vernon. I have served for, if Holland America Line was 35 years, in the hotel department, and we were taking care of all our American guests. And there were many, many, and over the years, millions of guests. We were, and they all had the chance to come back, and they came back. So that's why we should keep the Dutch-American relationship as a tradition of excellence, which was the logo for Holland America Line, to continue that for many more years. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I think, you know, we'll just go down and take a picture with him now, and then we'll do the next proclamation. Okay, our next proclamation is Veterans' Day, and that's going to be presented by Councilmember Lee and accepted by Jared Larson, the Bellevue firefighter, ladder 107.
It's an honor for me to read the following proclamation. Whereas Veterans' Day, observed annually on November 11th, honors the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of those who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas the origins of this observance trace back to November 11th, 1918, when the armistice ending World War I was signed, marking a moment of peace after years of global conflict. Originally known as Armistice Day, it was renamed Veterans' Day in 1954 to honor all who have served in war and peace. And whereas this day serves as a heartfelt tribute to the men and women who have defended our freedoms, often at great personal cost, and reminds us of our collective responsibility to ensure that veterans have access to the health care, education, employment, and community support they have earned. And whereas Washington State is home to more than 500,000 veterans, including many who live and work in Bellevue, and whose leadership, integrity, and service continue to strengthen our community. And whereas the city of Bellevue joins the nation in recognition, the extraordinary contribution of our veterans and their families, we affirming our commitment to being a community where every veteran is respected, supported, and valued. And whereas Bellevue honors our veterans through partnerships, volunteer efforts, and community observances, such as the annual Veterans' Day ceremony, reflecting the city's deep appreciation for their service and sacrifice. Now therefore I, Conrad Lee, on behalf of Mayor Lynn Robinson, City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veterans' Day in Bellevue, Washington, and encourage all residents to join in honoring the service, courage, and sacrifice of our veterans and their families. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, Councilmembers. It's an honor to be here tonight, not just as a firefighter, but as someone who's served in the cloth of our nation, in defense of our country. It's not uncommon for veterans to find their second calling in the fire service. The values are the same: teamwork, representing something larger than yourself, commitment to protecting others. Whether it's on deployment overseas or responding to emergencies at home, that shared mission unites us. And when the alarm sounds and our services are called upon, we stand ready to answer that call. So on behalf of the veterans within the Bellevue Fire Department, as well as those who have served and continue to serve in this great city, thank you.
Wonderful. Let's do a picture. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Let's see. Next up is oral communications. Do we have people signed up?
This evening, there are five pre-registered speakers. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time of oral communications is for a period of not more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the presiding officer is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker will be allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three people will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And then additionally, I want to remind everybody that in compliance with Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a ballot measure or support or oppose a candidate for election, and that includes one's own campaign. Anyone beginning to speak on topics of that nature will be asked to stop. With that, I'll call our first speaker, who I believe is joining us, whoops, virtually, and that's Debbie Lacy.
Yes.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Not able to show my screen. I apologize. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of council. I'm Debbie Lacy with the nonprofit Eastside for All, speaking on behalf of several nonprofit organizations, immigrant community leaders, and the Safe Haven Coalition, to urge you to increase human services grants in the mid-biennium budget update. The city's draft appropriation, if I'm reading correctly, includes no adjustment for human services despite a deepening crisis. We're facing expanded unconstitutional immigration enforcement. ICE funding has nearly tripled since 2024, now at nearly $30 billion, with a reported national target of 90,000 arrests per month. In a report issued this August, UW Center for Human Rights outlined that the federal government is breaking international humanitarian law with actions that include enforced disappearances, which has happened to Eastside community members this year. The first enforcement action under this administration that we heard about happened here in Bellevue at Crossroads Shopping Center in January. As we anticipated these needs last fall, we asked council to allocate a portion of the one-time nearly $2.8 million additional funding for human services to culturally specific supportive services. Unfortunately, not only was that unsupported, but only 6% of that funding went to organizations best positioned to respond, despite over 40% of Bellevue residents being first-generation immigrants. In my nearly 30 years of nonprofit service and coalition building on the East Side, I have never witnessed a crisis of this magnitude directly impacting community and public safety. And this isn't a public safety issue local police can address. The first responders are small immigrant-led nonprofits, often with budgets under $1 million, who are showing up at the Northwest Detention Center, helping families assign guardianship for children left behind, and providing food and basic needs that the overcapacity detention center isn't supplying. These organizations are trusted lifelines to impacted Bellevue neighbors, stepping in where no one else can or will. This year, as the crisis worsened with incident reports increasing by the week, we appealed to Bellevue, Redmond, and Kirkland for a rapid response fund. Please refer to our email communications to you in June and September. Kirkland led the local response support with just over 166,000. Redmond followed with $250,000 in support. We asked Bellevue to do the same through a mid-biennium budget amendment to increase human services funding for immigrant community first responders. We look forward to your conversations and deliberations on this. We're here to support and provide information as you make these critical decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Christina DeGony. I'll take them. It's okay. You can go ahead and start speaking.
Good evening. My name is Christina DeGony, and I'm here on behalf of Overlake Farm as the developer of a 4,000-linial-foot sewer extension down the middle of 140th in Bellevue, Washington. On the documents I've just handed out, the first page, I think, is probably best illustrates what's happened. We've put in 4,000-linial feet, as highlighted in the red dash going up 140th, and we're currently in the middle of negotiating a latecomer's agreement with the utility department. The utility department has refused to give us a reservation of capacity, despite the fact that we've taken two years, $3 million, and have done a main extension sewer on behalf of the City of Bellevue, in part. In part. We've resolved a couple things by doing this. Since 2013, the Valley Creek Sewer Line has failed. I have a letter from the city from 2013 indicating that that sewer had failed. We solved that problem for the city. We also solved the middle housing problem by allowing sewer for those homes that are currently on septic. Now, the reason I'm here today, tonight, is again to ask that you direct the utility department to provide us a reservation of capacity. There is no law stating that a reservation cannot be provided. It's simply, however, we are entitled to latecomer fees from approximately 70 parcels, not even, but they're the ones represented in blue here. Those are part of our zone of benefit, and those parcels will be providing a latecomer agreement or latecomer dollars back to us over the next 20 years. The problem and the reason we need a reservation of capacity is, as we all know, within the next 20 years, Bellevue could look significantly different. You will have gone through two more comp plans in that 20 years. If the City of Bellevue upzones any part of this 315 acres that comprises the red hashtags and the blue, it will drastically draw down the sewer capacity that is left. Overlake Farm is the single largest landholding left in Bellevue, and we do have plans to do development on it. We have recently submitted for pre-development of five to eight acres. But let's face it, it is going to take time to develop that out to full capacity. The city, the utility department, has done an analysis as to the capacity under current zoning, and that is what we are asking for. The city says that there's plenty of capacity, so we should not worry about it. But if the city upzones any of this 315 acres in the next 20 years, that capacity will have disappeared. Not only will we not have...
Unfortunately, your time has expired. I'd encourage you to email the rest of your comments to the council.
Absolutely. I can email this digitally to everybody, too.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Lalita Uppala, who's joining us, oops, virtually. Hold tight. Okay, Ms. Uppala, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
We can. Your time begins now.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and the Bellevue City Council. I am Lalita Uppala, go by she/her, Executive Director for Indian American Community Services. Today, I am urging you to increase the human services funding to support emergency crisis services across BIPOC communities in these unprecedented times, where we are having to step up each day to address immigration-related crisis cases in an unprecedented magnitude. We had earlier in the year reached out to this city council predicting a pandemic for BIPOC communities, which result in our small grassroots nonprofits rising to support communities despite slim operating budgets. As a resident of the City of Bellevue, home to a very large immigrant community, we are recognizing that we are not safe in our homes, in our workplaces, schools, and parks. Just this evening, a neighborhood in Sammamish, Washington faced ICE agents asking residents, workers in schools, and daycares for legal identification, proving their residence in the United States. Panic has spread in our community, as stories are told in dismay. Families recognize how othered we are today in the United States, in Washington, in our state, and in King County, and once again in East King County. We CBOs in the City of Bellevue are seeking emergency funding support from Bellevue Human Services for providing emergency linguistically and culturally relevant immigration assistance, help desk, education, know-your-rights campaigns, so that we can provide support to citizens, green card holders, legal residents, work visa holders, domestic violence survivors, because none of us are safe. Our request of you as a city is to please step up and collaborate with us in providing and supporting much-needed services for BIPOC communities, as did the City of Kirkland and Redmond. For our work can only be sustainable and comprehensive if we meet the needs of our community in a timely manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then next speaker on the list is Sue Mercer.
I come again to talk on about three different topics. The other lady spoke about sewers, and I want to remind you that there is a lake at the corner of Southeast 16th and 156th, because the culvert has not been cleaned out properly. The water's not flowing. I stopped by yesterday, I think, and perhaps you have received the various intersections and traffic lights that need attention. I'm asking, have you received that information? Okay. Jack will get it to you. Also, now I've forgotten what I wanted to say. I am going to be married to a green card holder, and the city should think about bringing charges against any ICE people that violate our constitution by arresting American citizens or green card holders. We should not allow what is happening in our country to happen in our city. We need to stand up for the truth and for the Constitution. The other thing is parking. And I would like you to look at the parking laws. When I bought my house 56 and a half years ago, it was free to park in front of my house. And in 1990, you changed the law, saying that you can't park for more than 24 hours in any given block. Now, I would like you to change that law, grandfathering those people who owned homes before you changed the law to give them free parking in front of their own homes. And I'm not sure who permitted the original building of my home, but they did not permit a safe driveway. And I'm in the process of making my driveway safe, but I think it's the city's responsibility to correct the curb so that my property has a safe, not a too steep driveway that could allow a car, if the brakes fail, to end up in the middle of 156 or even across. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to meeting with somebody who is going to draw up the regulations to change parking, especially along 156 between Southeast 16th and the five-way stop. There used to be free parking there, and you put in a bike lane...
Ms. Mercer, your time has expired. I'd encourage you to email the rest of your comments.
Yes. If you could follow up with her and make sure she doesn't email, that would be great.
We will. Thank you. The final list, or person on our list, is Alex Zimmerman.
Everyone, what is you want, my purer? Yeah. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I lived in Bellevue for 40 years, and what's happened right now in Bellevue for the last few years, from my understanding, don't have analogy in America. And I explained to you the situation, what is absolutely idiotic. First, we have two councils who have two citizenships. By definition, it's not law for protect them for this position. You know what I mean? And everybody who worked for government posted we have one only citizenship. I think this open to all countries in this planet. You know what I mean? And Bellevue is a huge exception. Yes, support by Mayor Robinson, you know what I mean, and support by Council Balducci. Yes, situation absolutely critical. Another point, what is absolutely critical, we have approximately 120,000 people, what is I call jungle slave, you know what I mean, what is come from India, 65,000, and come from Chinese, 45,000.
I'm going to ask you to refine your comments to be civil when you're speaking in this house. This is the people's house. You don't need to be rude to be people.
Thank you very much. You interrupt me every meeting. I'm very happy with this, you know, it's who you are. Yes, the situation very critical, because many from them do have a two citizenship. This is not good for America.
Okay, this has nothing to do with the Bellevue City Council.
120,000 work for Bellevue.
It doesn't have anything to do with our council work.
But you approved this for the last few years. You know what I mean, makes this 120,000.
I've given you a warning. If you continue, I'm going to shut you off.
When you stop and acting like a critin', huh? You are pure critin'. That is exactly who you are.
Okay, that doesn't have anything to do with council business either. So you're done. Your public comment is over. I'm going to ask you to leave, please.
You're doing this every meeting and...
And now you're disturbing our meeting.
Doesn't trespass this. Why are you doing this?
Now you're disturbing the meeting.
It's absolutely due, situation.
Okay.
You're a real critin'.
We're going to move on. So under council business and initiatives, we have a consideration of appeal. So I'll have our city manager go ahead and introduce this for us.
Mayor, I think that our city attorney will give you the information about how to take up the appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. As explained in your memo, tonight you are considering an appeal of a notice of exclusion issued by Planning Commissioner Chair, Planning Commission Chair Khan Lu to Alex Zimmerman. Chair Khan Lu issued the exclusion order on October 22nd banning Mr. Zimmerman from attending Planning Commission meetings for 60 days or until December 21st. Mr. Zimmerman has filed a timely written appeal of Chair Khan Lu's order. And per Bellevue City Code, the council is to consider Mr. Zimmerman's appeal by reviewing the notice of appeal, which contains the basis for Chair Khan Lu's order, as well as Mr. Zimmerman's written appeal. Council should not consider any other information, facts, or testimony, other than what is contained in these two documents. This means council should disregard if you have heard any other comments about this matter. After your review and consideration, council has two choices: deny the appeal, which means upholding the decision that Chair Khan Lu issued, and granting the appeal, which means overturning the decision. Those are the choices that you have, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's start with... So let's start with just a motion, and then we can have a discussion or answer any questions. In Trisino, you'll be available to answer questions.
Yes.
Okay.
I move to deny the appeal of the notice of exclusion issued by the Planning Commission Chair Khan Lu to Alex Zimmerman on October 22nd, 2025.
Are there any comments or questions about this? Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendars.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have four study session items tonight. Two are for information, and then two are kind of bundled together for one direction. So, city manager, go ahead.
Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor and Council. The first study session tonight is on brand identity, community feedback report, and this work does support the council's priority to develop and establish an updated brand identity for the city, one that hopefully resonates with our diverse communities and aligns with the city's core values and vision. Taking a look at the cities, how the city is viewed and perceived is important for a number of reasons, including assessing how the the community views line up with what they value in this city. So earlier this year, staff with consultant assistants conducted outreach in the community, and tonight, Michelle DeGrand, our Chief Communications Officer, and I don't know if Megan is here. Megan is online, Megan Hathaway, Research Director from DH Communications, and Ian Hanson at the table, Senior Account Executive from DH. They're here tonight to give you an overview of that work and to seek some feedback and let you know what the next steps are. With that, I'll hand it over to Michelle.
Thanks, City Manager President. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council members. It's really great for us to be here tonight and share with you some of the findings that we got out of the outreach that we did earlier this year towards our brand assessments and activity enhancement options. And we'll go through some of those.
See if I can get this thing to work. It did work earlier. Oops, I probably went too far then, didn't I? Okay, great, got it. All right, so our presentation is for information only tonight, but we would love to get your feedback on the areas of this work that really speak to you, things that you've heard out in the community as you've spoken to people. You are an important stakeholder in this, and so definitely want to get your feedback on this as we go forward. This input will help us really begin developing the specific tactics that we'll have in the work plan to begin making these brand enhancements as we go forward. So I have just a couple of slides on our project background for you. We'll also go through the different methodologies that we used when we did this outreach earlier this year, and then I'll hand it off to Megan and Ian, and they'll talk about some of our key findings, and also synthesize that up to what some of the community focus areas and suggestions really turned out to be. And then I also have just some next steps to share with you as well. All right, so first in background, mostly for the community, the top yellow box that you see there is our council priority number two, and it is really related to developing and establishing an updated brand for the city. And as the city manager said, something that really resonates with the community and yet still aligns with our city values. So that's really what's driving our work and what drove our outreach that we did earlier this year. The lower box on the screen is council priority number 10, and this is actually related more to enhanced community engagement. That effort will be led by a separate team within the city, but one that is equally important and very tied into communications, because as someone interacts with the brand, they often do that through engagement activities. So we wanted to make sure that we were incorporating that. And we also have our community engagement team members here in the audience today as they were an important part of this process and also attended our focus groups. So wanted to establish, some of the, some of the council members have seen this slide already, but really this is for the community, wanted to establish really what is a brand, because that means different things to different people. The history of a brand goes all the way back to livestock history, where they actually used a brand to put a mark on an animal. And so because of that history, I think people really think about a brand as being your logo. It is your mark. Yes, that is a part of our brand, but what's really important, and we wanted everyone to understand, is that it's really just one of three important parts of your total brand identity. It is part of your visual identity, which is that top green circle in this Venn diagram. It's how you look at your logos and your materials. But importantly, there are two other equally heavy parts of your brand. One is behavioral, it's what we do, and our values and actions that we show when we communicate upon our brand, and it's our verbal identity, which is what we say and how we communicate. And really, all three of these things together create our brand experience, and that's really what we wanted to assess. So the questions that we did in this outreach, really, we're looking to get at what that brand experience is for people today and how we can, again, make that more relevant for them and still align with our values. So just going through the ways that we conducted our outreach earlier this year to achieve a number of different things. We wanted to give people the ways to engage that were easiest for them. So we did focus groups so that we could have in-depth discussions and really dig into what people's perceptions and communications preferences were. But we also held a community listening session, which allowed us to get a broader group that was open to the public. We did a community survey that was open to the public, and we also engaged with internal groups of city staff and city council members, as well as doing some small business outreach. Importantly, we already understand that we do have some work to do in reaching all of our diverse communities in Bellevue. So as we did this outreach, particularly with the focus groups, we leveraged our teams at Mini City Hall, we leveraged our Bellevue Diversity Advantage Network, we leveraged our Communities of Color Coordinating Team, and also our Diversity Advantage Team to be able to reach out to and specifically target some of these communities in Bellevue to really get that in-depth conversation through our focus groups. So I think that's important for us to mention. All right, so with that, I'm going to hand it off to Megan Hathaway, who is virtually on screen with us, and she's going to walk through the first section of some of our key findings in the work that we did here. So Megan, take it away.
Thank you so much, Michelle, and thank you to you, Mayor Robinson, and to city council for having us here today. We're very grateful to be here. So we do have a comprehensive report detailing all of the findings across our methodologies that Michelle just shared, but wanted to distill some of the key findings to share with you today. So one of the first things we asked folks to consider in both focus groups and the survey is their perception of Bellevue. And more specifically, we asked them to share the top words and phrases that come to mind when thinking about Bellevue. So as you can see in the word cloud reflected here, some of the things that most, that came most top of mind included the city's beautiful parks and green spaces, its safety and cleanliness, the growth and development of the business community, and for some, of the higher cost and affluence within the city as well. I'd also flagged that in the focus groups in particular, folks commonly shared that the city's diversity, culture, and welcoming neighborhoods were top of mind as well. So next, we asked somewhat of a similar question, but this time about the perceptions of the city of Bellevue as a local government. So top terms that came to mind here were that the city is well-managed, efficient, and responsive, that the city is growth and business-minded, and that it supports and facilitates high quality of life and community connection. In addition, we did hear some more constructive comments, sharing that the city government can feel complicated or bureaucratic, that for some, it does not feel like it's geared toward the needs and focuses of all residents. So we additionally asked participants to share the concepts that they associate most with Bellevue and those that align with their own personal values. And there was strong alignment in the top two areas associated with both the city and participant values, and those included beautiful natural areas and clean and safe city, which you can see are reflected here in those top two spots for both categories. This line of questioning also showed an area of opportunity, really. So there were some instances where the community showed high personal value or prioritization, but did not necessarily perceive Bellevue as representing those values as highly. So some examples include high-quality services and caring community. Participants stated that they really personally value these qualities highly, but did not necessarily associate them as highly with the city of Bellevue. And we know, of course, that these qualities in particular are highly valued by the city of Bellevue, so this really just reflects an opportunity, rather, to tell that story in a better way and to demonstrate behavior that the city really is committed to those So we then asked a little bit about feedback on informational materials that are produced by the city, and participants shared most commonly the following that I'll walk through here. So first, while resources were perceived as professional, they are often too dense. So materials, including the website, the city of Bellevue website, would be easier to use and to digest, they're more scannable, with the most critical of information prioritized. Next, we heard that resources really would benefit from the use of more visuals, especially graphics and photographs that use, that can be used to help communicate critical information in an easier, more digestible way. Participants noted that they would prefer more visuals over more wordy information whenever possible. Related to that, the third note here is that participants would like to see selected visuals reflect the diversity of the city. So as you heard earlier, participants really do highly value the city's diversity and would like to see visuals that represent the many communities across Bellevue being reflected across informational materials and resources being produced by the city. Fourth, while Bellevue currently already works hard to translate its critical materials into the most common languages spoken in Bellevue, participants did note that they would like to see more materials available in language when possible. And then last but not least, we heard commonly that participants shared that the city's branding and materials can feel sterile at times, and they aren't necessarily reflective of the city's beauty and vibrancy that we heard folks really, really value earlier in this presentation. Participants do understand the professional, excuse me, professionalism required of city materials, but they really would like them to reflect more of the city's beautiful qualities. Okay, so as we shared earlier, when it comes to consideration of branding, communications, and engagement really do go hand in hand. So while there are other community-wide efforts that are taking place, very specifically focused on engagement, we did collect some feedback related to community preferences for engagement, and we'll share those with you today as well. So first, we heard that folks would like to see engagement as an ongoing and relational process as compared to something that feels more transactional. Folks want to know that they'll have opportunities to engage with the city in valuable, ongoing ways. Next, we heard that rather than asking communities to come to the city, folks really would like to see the city meet communities where they are and come to them when it comes to city engagement and outreach opportunities. Next, we heard participants recommend partnering very closely with community-based organizations within the city of Bellevue. And the reason for this is that these really are the places and spaces where communities are spending their time, and it can serve, they can serve, rather, as trusted messengers to relay important information across Bellevue's diverse communities and neighborhoods. Next, we heard folks would like to see more opportunities to co-create these engagement opportunities. So they shared that so often opportunities are set or established or brainstormed before communities are approached, and they really would like to be a part of that planning process and shaping these activities to the extent possible. And then lastly, but again, certainly not least, participants shared that while they do see Bellevue doing this, they would like to continue see, to see inclusive ways for people to get involved. So this is factoring in all learning styles, abilities, languages, personal experiences. And then this slide here represents a combination of our survey results and the top responses from our focus group discussions. So when we asked folks about preferred communications channels, people across methodologies shared that the city of Bellevue website, the city of Bellevue newsletters and email announcements, and the It's Your City newsletter are communications channels that they use most commonly, so their preferred communications channels. Additional channels that folks use most frequently are ranked here in order of preference, and that includes things like social media, and Facebook and Instagram are mentioned the most frequently, word of mouth at community events and gatherings, city-hosted gatherings and meetings open to the entire community, contacting local officials, local media outlets, and use of the My Bellevue app. Now I'm going to pass things off to Ian here, who's here with you in person, and he's going to share a bit more about some of the more specific recommendations for focus areas that were shared across our methodologies.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Megan, and thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council for your investment in this important council priority. So time and time again, through our engagement with community members, we identified six key focus areas that we heard in different ways, different mediums, from different folks of different backgrounds, and suggestions for how we can help achieve these community-focused areas. So we'll start with number one. It's important to maximize high-touch, trusted communications. People want to hear from people that they trust and community-based organizations that they know, and these trusted messengers can help bring messages to the community that may resonate more strongly than just from the city itself and allow for a dialogue with those trusted messengers back to the city. Number two, an increase in the sharing of community voices in citywide materials. Again, there's a sense of trust from hearing from the community, whether that's residents or businesses, and we want to spotlight those in citywide communications materials. Number three, communications should be proactive and not reactive whenever possible. Some folks see the city as backward-looking in its communications, and yes, it's important to celebrate successes and accomplishments, but looking ahead and making the space and time for folks to know how they can get involved is equally important. Number four, visuals used in city communications should reflect the beauty and diversity of the city. It's a city in a park. It's vibrant. There's beauty in the diversity, and often the city can be seen as a sterile and formal brand, and leaning into the vibrant colors and photography in our messaging and communications materials was desired. Number five, further language accessibility. Again, people value and celebrate Bellevue's diversity, and the city does a lot of great work in translated and transcreated materials, but using plainer language so that trusted messengers can translate those materials further and expanding the translations was desired as well. And lastly, number six, transparency as a priority. People want to understand what's happening. They want to get involved through these focus groups and listening sessions and surveys. I think that's clear, that residents want to share their inputs, and the city wants to listen. So this, again, ties into proactive communications, but making space in physical spaces, digital spaces, social media would allow folks to do that.
Great, thanks, Ian, and thanks, Megan. And just quickly round us out here and walk through some next steps, starting with a quick timeline. So earlier this year, we conducted our outreach, we're in Q4 right now, where we're analyzing that data and sharing the report. As we move into 2026, we're really looking to implement some updates that we can do within our current budget, and then really identify what other pieces we want to include in our work plan and what kind of timelines and budget might be associated with those so that we can build that going forward. I want to draw your attention to the very last bullet on the far-right column there, the Q2 plus 2026 item, maintenance. What does that mean? It means this is not a one-and-done effort. It means we will continue to touch base with the community. We know that our community is constantly evolving, and so we want to be responsive to that and continue to do touch-base efforts and make sure that we continue to be resonant and in line with those shared values. Also important to start out, we are not starting from zero. We have a lot of work that is underway, and in fact, a lot of the findings that we got through this effort were affirmative of things that we already knew we could improve upon, and so we've already started some of those efforts, including we are in the process of developing a plain language framework. So what that means is that we're using words that are understandable to all people and that are easily translated into other languages, which makes that language access easier. We're also continuously improving and expanding our technology tools and assessing how they're working for us in order to improve our communications and community engagement functions. We currently provide and meet compliance with language access regulations. We will continue to do that for vital information, and again, as I said, our community continues to evolve, and we expect that that very soon is going to expand to even more languages. So we will certainly do that and continue to look for those places to go beyond compliance with our language translation efforts. And then finally, strengthening that communication and community engagement effort. We've got that team, our community engagement team, and you're going to hear from them in the months ahead about the work that they are doing to build their own work plan to help enhance that function of the city. So just wanted to kind of lay those things out there. And finally, just sort of some initial takeaways and opportunities for y'all to think about as you think about where those areas of focus might be that are most meaningful to you. Very clear, parks, natural beauty, and community environment vibrancy came up as some key visual values, and so we can really explore ways to build that into our visual system immediately. Noticing that gap between the Bellevue perception and the community values for some of those topics, again, same thing, that's an easy get that we can start working on right away in terms of closing that gap and using that opportunity to better share our story in those. and using that opportunity to better share our story in those areas. The desire for content that's more visual, easier to understand, we hear that, and we can begin to build that into our system, begin to build in more visuals, and we're already exploring that with some teams throughout the city on how we can do that and what specific tactics we can put in our work plan. And then building that regular engagement transparency and community voice cadence so that we are responsive to that and building that into our processes, that's a piece that we already recognize and that we are doing with that community engagement team as they do their work. And recognizing people have limited time, but they are really interested in engaging with the projects that they care about through those trusted channels. So doing that work to build up where are those trusted messengers and how can we leverage them in a better way. And again, the top sources of information, those are all great places for us to start because we know that those are channels that people are using and that work for them right now. All right, so with that, would love to, again, get any feedback that you have or any questions that you have for us as we begin to build out this work plan.
Thank you. So yeah, information only. Before we start, I would like you to clarify something, two things. One is brand identity. I think of like our logo, and we're hearing a lot about outreach and community engagement. So can you tell me how those two go together? Number one, and number two, explain the difference between our city brand identity that we're working on tonight versus what Visit Bellevue does.
Good. Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, as we talked about those three different pieces of your total brand identity, the logo as a, as a visual element, engagement really fits into our behavioral brand identity. So those are, that's like the things that we do and how we interact with you. So it really is a key piece of that overall brand experience that we are looking to assess and improve. So that's kind of how those two things go hand in hand, if I were to answer that question. And then secondly, great question about the distinction between what Visit Bellevue does and what the city of Bellevue does in terms of branding. Some of you may know that Visit Bellevue just recently did a campaign to rebrand their Visit Bellevue brand, and they are really focused externally on business attraction and tourism. And so that's a little bit of a different flavor, I'll say, than what we are doing in terms of what the city offers and the identity of the local government entity.
Thank you. Well, let's start with Councilmember Newenhouse. It's your night tonight.
Thank you, and thank you, Michelle, Megan, Ian, for, for the great start. There was a lot of great nuggets as I was making my way through the, through the packet here. Let's see, and a couple, number of questions, I'll, I'll be cognizant of the time not to take up too much time. But, you know, great, as I would call it, kind of a brand audit that we, that we've done here. And it's really, you know, not about what we say the brand is, is what the residents tell us the brand is. I don't think, in a lot of ways, there weren't any surprises. I think it reinforces what, what, what we think, or what, what I hear from residents all the time in terms of kind of those, those top, I don't know, identifiers, if you will, of, of what they think of when they think of Bellevue. Clean, safe, green. I hear it, hear it all the time. So that's, so that's great. I, I, and I love that you spent a lot of time also on the engagement piece because that is so important, that the identity lives up to the behavioral, right? What, what they see, and maybe even the emotional tie that they see or that they have with the city, that that identity lives up to that, that it, that it, that it connects, right, with their experience with, with the city. And I think that might be the toughest part because there is a little bit of a, of a disconnect there a little bit in terms of what we've heard, in terms of the, 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 the communic- the communiques being sterile or not being as vibrant or as visual as what they think of when they think of their city communicating with, with them. Which leads me to my first quarter, like, how are we going to take that in? And how does, how is that going to be reflected in terms of the overall cities like brand essence on the behavioral piece or on the engagement piece? How is that going to work itself into the, into the final product, if you will?
Yeah, so I think we got a lot of good directional information from people in terms of really what they are looking for, what they want to see from us in terms of the transparency, in terms of the being proactive and, and forward-looking as opposed to retroactive and backward-looking. Those are all kind of behavioral things. And then also, the frequency came up in our outreach in terms of like, we want, you know, communicate often, communicate early, right? And so those types of things are things that we can implement within our communications processes that really directly respond to that behavioral element and tie in with engagement. And again, we'll work closely with the engagement team to make sure that we are well-coordinated through that effort.
And then as part of that, that next step, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact timeline in front of me, but establishing that, that, that brand positioning statement, if you will, that captures the, the, the city's promise and, and, and personality reflects who we are today. When, when, when would that come, come back to us?
Yeah, so I feel like, again, there are some really easy, low-hanging fruit things that we can begin working on right away. That one is probably one that we will actually look at. Okay, what are some specific tactics that we can employ that will get us there? And those will become elements in our work plan. And I would expect that we're going to really take maybe through the end of the year to think about, okay, with all of this information, what are some of those specific things that we can add into a work plan? And then what are the things that, you know, how much time will they take? How much will they cost? And how much bang can we get for a buck, essentially? And then have all of those sort of built out around the first quarter of 2026.
And as part of that, kind of have those, you know, four or five, like, main brand pillars associated with, okay. A, a lot of the feedback around the materials that was made during the, during the engagement process, was that an open-headed question? Or did you give specific examples of ma- materials? I wasn't quite sure how that question was really communicated to the people that were engaged in this. And I think we could have gotten, you know, slightly different answers based on what materials we were referring to. Can you touch on that?
And just to clarify, Councilmember, do you mean specifically the visuals?
Well, visuals, but many times you, you just say materials. And, and, and that's why I'm not sure what you mean by materials. Or is it, or was it just, you know, an open-ended question? It could have been anything. And, and just left it to their discretion in terms of what materials.
Okay, so that was not a question that we included in the survey because that was difficult for us, you know, to give them visuals. But we did do that in the focus groups and in the targeted outreach. And so we did actually give people a range of materials, so flyers, It's Your City newspaper, neighborhood news, newsletter, program flyers and pamphlets. So we gave them a broad range of materials that we put out and had them visually assess them.
The community organization was great to see. You played a, a fairly, say, important role in the feedback as well. I'm just curious, were they all Bellevue organizations or were they outside of Bellevue as well?
So for the organizations that we held, that we reached out to and conducted the focus groups with, they were all Bellevue organizations, people that were connected to and serving the, the communities in Bellevue.
And then last question on the, their preferred communication. I was just curious, kind of surprised at me, that website was number one, unless it was where do you go for trusted city information versus what is their preferred communication style? Because when I hear things like you need to come to us, or we prefer that you come meet us where we are, but yet their preferred communication style was the website, to me, that didn't quite line, line up. And I would think also that, you know, given where we are today and all the different technological or technology tools at our, at our disposal, I would think that social, for example, might be more of a, a quick way to get the information that they need or be engaged. So can you speak to that a little bit?
So the specific question that we had was rank the following sources. So we gave them a list based on how often you use them to get information about Bellevue. So it was really about the poll. Yeah, and I will add too that we had the opportunity, obviously, to do more of an in-depth discussion in the focus groups. And so that's where we dug in more to like those specific channels. So Instagram, Facebook, and then for our diverse communities, WhatsApp and some other channels came up in those discussions as being very important for specific communities, yeah.
So as, as we progress, for me, it'd be really important to know, you know, trusted source or where, where they go versus their preferred communication style. I think that's really, really important that we clarified that.
That's a great distinction because it's like, what's available for me now versus what do I wish they had? Yeah.
Absolutely. So thank you so much for the, for the great update. I mean, for, for my colleagues, you know, this is something that we started pre-COVID that got sidelined, rightly so. So I'm just thrilled that we're able to pick this back up again. And this is just great feedback and great engagement from, from residents and organizations. And i- it touches so many different things that we can address, learn from, improve, and hopefully really get to a point where we have not only improved communications, but an improved identity as well that really reflects the city and, and city government as well. So thank you for all your great work. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. This is a great piece of work. I think we started out wanting to see what brand we're making. But I think that came out of this, which I'm, you know, really appreciating is engagement. You went through the process of getting people to talk, what do they need to look at? Especially when you talk about the gap thing, you know, what people see, what people want to see, what Bellevue's path has been. But then it doesn't appear to be quite the same thing. So you start communicating with them. And I think the thing came out to me that's really stand out is really what the public is seeing Bellevue as a city and what we can do to have better engagement with them. Some of the key words I get, which is what I've been getting after thirty-some years on the council, after living Bellevue for fifty-some years, I talk to these folks. They know, I know how they feel. I know how I feel. And I've seen how the government relates to the people. The key word is trusted messenger. That's the element. You know, I'm glad that DH Communications is working with you. They are the experts in communication, right? So they know how to communicate. They know how to get message through. They know how to get, listen to the public. So we know where we're going, where we're... So I think that's good. This is valuable, very valuable. But I think the key should be focus on communication. Because after communication, then we can start building the brand, right? We are what we're going to be and how do we use various means to do it. So I really like, and it's engagement's relational. It's not transactional. People want to be staying with you. They want to create, co-create, not create. They want to co-create the keys. They want us to, one thing that we learned is that we have to go to them because they're busy, right? So they're going to wait. If we just wait, they're not going to come in. We got to go to them. So this is one step the city has to do. I think that's an action we need to do. And obviously, we're talking about the other things, language, order's important, diversity, people like to see it. These are all things that we heard. So I think ultimately, the word is transparency. That means communication, talking to them, telling them, they understanding us, they see us, that's transparency. Again, that's relationship. It's not transactional. Okay, and key is, how do we maintain this? How do we keep it long-term? Not just today, you're gone, transactional, not transactional. Relationship is long. It doesn't just work one day. Parental relationship, family relationship, it's not one day, it's forever. So I think these are the key. If we can understand how this can be done, how we make the effort to build this relationship, we come a long way. This wonderful work, but make sure you focus on building relationship, communicating, in relationship, not transactional. I'm, I'm floored. I'm, I think this is great work. So thank you, Michelle, that you started this conversation. And thanks, DH Communications, for doing this. One thing I was going to say is, I don't remember being part of the communication with city council discussion on this. I, I thought maybe I did because a lot of these things you put down is what I'm thinking about. So I'm glad, I'm glad, you know, so regardless, well done, good job.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Stu Meduirea.
Thank you. Wow, I love this. I love marketing and PR. This is like so amazing. And I love how you describe how different marketing branding versus engagement because I think they are intertwined, like intertwined together, but they're like different, right? So there, it's good that you cleared that message. I have a few questions to ask about this. One of the page that was saying that the trusted voice from the community member, that include like maybe council members too, to help to message together as a collaboration? Does it count? I'm just wondering if it's beneficial.
I think that's an excellent point, Councilmember, and I think that you all could absolutely serve in that role. You certainly have connections, trusted connections, right, to different aspects and parts and elements of the community. When we had that discussion within the focus groups, what folks were really talking about, and it could be you, it could be someone else, but it's people who look like them. It's people from within their communities who they already have a relationship with and trust. In a lot of ways, for us, that is our community-based organizations and really using the relationships that have already been built to be able to share those messages. So that's really kind of where folks were thinking when they were talking about those trusted messengers. And again, it could be anyone from anywhere in the community, just someone who you have that trusted relationship with.
I think it's really helpful for us to get trained how to having very unified message when we want to showcase how amazing our city is. So with proper training, we, 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 I think, I mean, for me, I think I want to be utilized more, right? Yeah, so, thank you. And then another question I had was, so I am actually really interested, one, you know, when we have one part of the survey was directly to small businesses. So I'm wondering if there is, how can we, using branding, also elevate like small business restaurants in our city as like the gem of our, because we, because the small business add vibrancy and culture. And then, you know, the definition of what Bellevue's personality is. I'm just wondering, putting out there, I wonder what is their capacity to maybe kind of add the element into the branding, final products, through either branding, marketing, or maybe storytelling of, you know, why did they pick Bellevue? Why are they, how are they thriving and how, you know, being Bellevue is like their first choice? Would that be a possibility?
Yeah, so what I'll say there, number one, as you know, Councilmember, they are strapped for time. So it is, you know, we, whatever we do, we have to make it easy for them. But also, absolutely, we can work with the economic development team. We have the benefit of having that as one of our pillars within the economic development plan update, right? Which is that we want to be able to focus on that diversification in those, those small businesses. So absolutely, we can do some of that with that team.
As long as we don't add extra work for them, but kind of like elevate their branding, you know, in parallel of what they're doing on their own already, I think it would be really helpful for them. Oh, you know what? I have one last question. That was on, you know how like there is one page on the response and then, and then it listed out what's the most iconic and memorable thing about Bellevue? And I see there's Old Bellevue, there's Bellevue Square, the city pride. Would we have opportunity or like maybe allocation of the resources to highlight? For example, like I love Old Main Bellevue. That's just like such an iconic place in Bellevue, and we're not going to be the same. I just took my kids trick-or-treating on Sunday, and it was amazing. There was four people, so much full vibrant, right? So is there any way we can elevate that, like focusing on these iconic pieces, like the old Bellevue?
That was one of the reasons why we asked that question, Councilmember, was to really figure out what do people associate with as iconic in the city? And how do we kind of leverage those things in the ways that we communicate? So absolutely, the plan would be to use the data that we got from this process and promote and leverage those things more and build them into more solidly, I'll say, into what our brand experience is.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank Councilmember Bargava.
I so appreciate the presentation, Michelle, Megan, and Ian. Again, plus one to some of the positive remarks on the, on the clarity and, and, and depth of the, of the work done. Very impressive. I also really, you know, wanna plus one the sentiment of actually going beyond communications to actually how the brand is perceived through communication and through engagement, what you're calling sort of the behaviors that come out. And that perception of the brand becomes much more real at that point, so appreciate that. I, just a few comments for me, and maybe just one, two questions really quickly. Plus one on the idea of actually going from dense to simple. I think that is one of the challenges that reduces not just the ability to communicate the idea, but also I think it impacts engagement. If people find it difficult to digest information once or twice, it's very good chance that people are coming back to engage with the information as frequently as they would like. So, that simplification and really making it such that, I love the idea of being able to translate that also with clarity in the same simplicity. So, what you can communicate in English with simple language and terms also translates to how you communicate in other languages and maintaining that simplicity. And also importantly, auditing for that, I think would be a really good thing. And then, the idea of visuals that sort of represent the diversity of our city, it's kind of an interesting thing. Beyond just photographs, I wonder what that would mean and how that translates into the way things are represented. Not totally clear to me, to be honest with you, but something that, you know, definitely caught my mind. I was trying to think about what you'd be doing, so maybe towards the end you can give some remarks on that. And then, plus one, the translation of communications, and that's an evolution. So, those are, on the com side, you know, some key takeaways for me. But I'll just also go through my other thoughts as well before I get to the question. On the behavioral side, you know, the idea of not meeting, not just meeting people where they are, but also early engagement of what councilmember Lee was talking about co-creation, I think is really important. Because I think I've heard that as I engage with the community, that, you know, decisions coming down the pipe are, you know, it's too late for the engagement, it's almost reactive and not proactive. And so, the more we can do there, the better outcomes we will have, the better engagement we have. And it also enhances the perception of the brand and the way people are thinking about the city, which I think is really helpful. And then partnering with trusted organizations and being that voice, I think is just a really, really important aspect. And I love that you're doing that with Bellevue-based organizations, I love that you're leveraging that. Which kind of takes me to, the question that I have for engagement is, meeting people where they are. I have one more question after this, but meeting people where they are. I know we do a lot of effort in trying to do that already. So, coming out of this, are there any specific ideas or any specific feedback where you thought gaps were there, where people felt we're missing a demographic segment or missing our ability to engage with people where they are over and above what we already do?
Sure, absolutely, thanks, councilmember, I can address that. And then, I also would love for Megan, who was there facilitating all of our focus groups as well, because there might be things that she thinks of that I don't. But I think one of the main pieces here in terms of meeting folks where they are is, we did hear from our focus groups that for a lot of communities, City Hall, for instance, is a little bit intimidating, right? So, doing activities, events, and meetings in places that are not seen as an intimidating government facility is one of those ways. Also, another thing that we heard in terms of meeting people where they are, are, you know, are we tabling out in the community, for instance, at places where people are going regularly? Are we utilizing and leveraging some of the community-driven events? Or, you know, places where people shop, you know, places where people congregate? Are we kind of utilizing those in a strategic way to be able to be out in the community where people are? Megan, did you want to add anything in terms of what you heard from the focus groups?
Yeah, I think, I think that was wonderful, Michelle, thank you. The only piece or sort of additional color I would add is that it's not only going to people, meeting them where they are, but also meeting them, this is terrible grammar, meeting them when they are, and I'll explain that. At organized events, places and spaces where they're already planning to spend their time, events that are already taking place, rather than asking them to come to you at a pre-scheduled time somewhere else, going to them at events and organized activities that are already taking place and, and engaging with them in a place where they're comfortable at a time when they're already planning to physically be there. Of course, with, with the permission of, of those groups and those people to spend that time with them. But I think it's not only just going to them, but also at a time and space that's, that's appropriate and where they're already planning to spend their time.
Yeah, great, that's super helpful. So, love to see how that translates into tactics as we drive engagement further. And my last question really is, you know, a lot of the feedback that seems to have come is very tangible, you know, proactive communications, better language translation, simplify the language. And I get what that means. And even the question of represent diversity more effectively, our visuals, one can understand. The one that I did have a hard time really understanding the feedback, and I'm looking for your take on this, was that our communications appear very sterile and we have to try and change that to make it more vibrant and reflective of the beauty of our city. How are you perceiving that feedback?
Yes, thank you, councilmember, for pointing that out. That was a term that did come up in the focus groups. And we did probe on that a little bit to kind of understand. People do appreciate that we have professional communications, but they were, they almost said they were overproduced, so they looked a little too sharp, a little too, you know, government-y or sterile in that way. And so, or they looked all sort of the same. And I think, getting back to your earlier question, councilmember, about like, how do the visuals represent, or what do you think about, or what are examples of visuals representing the diversity of our community? I think people were kind of expressing to us that our community is colorful, our community is vibrant. And the materials that we put out, they're very blue, they're very, you know, structured. And so, I think those were some of the things that we were getting from folks. And so, we just have to come together with our professional graphics team and talk about, what are the ways that we can kind of potentially make, you know, adjustments to our system to respond to that? Megan, I don't know if you had anything additionally that you wanted to add there?
Can I just ask, this is not like an earthquake, is it?
I think it's someone with very loud music, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's all about that bass, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would, I would add, I think you captured that wonderfully, Michelle, is just, it's a, it's a feeling of warmth that reflects the kind of community dynamic in the neighborhoods and the vibrancy. The, to some extent, city materials do need to look and feel professional, but to whatever extent possible, making them feel that kind of warm, community-based feeling that folks value in the city of Bellevue, reflecting that not only in the visuals, but the language that you're using to make it feel more accessible and, and reflect more of that warmth that people value in, in the community and the neighborhoods of Bellevue.
Great way to say it, thanks, Megan.
Got it, got it. Appreciate it, thank you again, great work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, mayor, thanks for the presentation. A lot of really good work here. Certainly appreciate the thorough response to our council priority number two, thank you for that. I want to take a moment to express some appreciation for all the work that you currently do, telling the city's story so effectively. Michelle, you and your, your team really do an excellent job of supporting the community in its effort to engage actively in the life of the city. And appreciate your collaboration in making the engagement even better through refining, enhancing, and enhancing our communications efforts. Also, appreciate Jason Gren, want to acknowledge the effort that is underway there and his support of all of us councilmembers and our efforts to engage the community through our own social media channels. And just want to add on to councilmember Suma Dewiria as well in just looking at ways that we can even enhance that kind of engagement with the community. I think you've landed on a comprehensive list of brand enhancement focus areas, appreciate that. Especially interested to see the impact of content that is more visual and easier to understand, as you've heard from my colleagues and you've already expressed the desire to have that. Appreciate the focus on early and often. I think that makes a lot of sense and anxious to see more from the community engagement team as well as we move forward. Would like to focus on early and hope that we can provide as many options as possible for community members to sign up for a wide range of automated communication options. And I know there are a number of alerts that are available now, but I hope as we go through this process, we can look to enhance that list. And I wonder too, when we talk about kind of broad channels of communication, if there might be a way for folks to kind of sign up for alerts that are more general? So, wherever it might come from, from within the city, for example, if it's a transportation-related issue, they've kind of tagged transportation as an issue that's important to them. And so, wherever, you know, we're doing something and it kind of touches on transportation, the environment, housing, whatever it might be. So, if they could just sign up in a really general way and get a bunch of information on a specific, you know, target that they have in mind, I think that would be great. But, great work, I think you're really, you've done a lot already and I think you're really on the right track to do even more. So, thank you, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Tiffany, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Michelle, Ian and Megan, and thank you for everyone who did all of the outreach, great work. I think this is, could be a great foundation for future work that improve our brand. I just wanted to highlight something that I've heard councilmember Lee and councilmember Suma Dewiria and some other councilmember mentioned. In the community engagement, I think the three things that it was very resonating with me was maximum high-touch trusted communication, that's something that we are hearing a lot. Why don't we rely on community-based organizations? Neighborhood associations are telling us they can help us, so I think we need to rely on them more. The other one was communication should be proactive, not retroactive. I think I am hearing that a lot in planning commission on the council. They wanted to know, knowing what's coming, we are doing amazing work, but we can do better because the perception is we need to work on that. And then, the last one, transparency as a priority. They wanted to know what is happening and how can they be involved from day one? And that's, again, if that's the perception that we are not there, I think we are doing our best to be that. But if the perception is that, so we need to be better. I have two, just a small questions and then maybe one comment. Do we have any metrics that, like we are going to say, hey, this is our baseline? Or do we have that before, or this is the first one? Because then we can track if this perception is changing over time. And what is the cadence you are doing that and what, what cadence you are coming back to us? I saw some future steps, but I just wanted to maybe elaborate on that more.
Yeah, absolutely. So, what I will say is that, yes, we will be developing a set of metrics and that is engagement. It is also, councilmember Hamilton, you mentioned kind of where those automated alerts occur, right? And doing some work to try to enhance that and grow that base of people who are getting automated alerts from us. So, there's a number of metrics there just from a, how are people engaging? How are they positively engaging, right? Once we make some adjustments to the ways in which we're talking about our brands, so that verbal element of our brand. So, yes, we already have some ideas on what those metrics might be and how we would be tracking them and also then connecting and touching base with them. And it includes just that talking with people, right? It is like going back to the community at regular intervals to say, how are we doing? You know, is it resonating with you, are there things that are still an issue? So, we've got a couple of different ways by which we can actually gauge and measure the effectiveness of this work going forward.
Great, but when we go back to them and say what we are doing, if we don't have a baseline metrics, if we don't know what their comments could translate to what we are doing, does it make sense?
Sure, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I would say as a baseline, we have the work that we just did earlier this year, right? So, that would be an example of our baseline. And then, if we went back to someone, say, six months or a year from now and said, hey, now how do you perceive Bellevue or how do you perceive the ways in which Bellevue is communicating with you? We would be able to see those differences.
This work would be our foundation of the baseline and then moving forward. Again, if we haven't done with this work, some key metrics and KPI would be great maybe to add to the next one, like, and again, by maybe more quantitative metrics. At, hey, what is your level of awareness? If the average was seven and then we go back to them, now the average is eight, then we are doing something good. Or, how much do you trust the Bellevue government? If there was ten out of ten before and now we improve that to eleven out of ten, that would be something that we can track. Then, there is a, there is a slide that I really like that has two segments and there is a gap. You talk about what, what cities, you are perceiving the, can you go to that website?
Yes.
What you perceive Bellevue and what is your values. Great work on this slide, by the way. Do we know what is our neighborhood, like, is, I know this is probably average of all of the surveys that you guys did or all of the focus group. But do we know which demographic or which neighborhood groups showed more gap, less gap? Like, do we have all of, I know there is a slide or, there is a, some survey of how many neighborhood, which neighborhood you are, seven people in downtown. Do we know exactly based on demographic and neighborhood, how this gap is going to be wider or narrower? Basically, that's my question.
So, we do not have that level of detail to say sort of what each person individually and where they live and how they responded to this question. That said, we can absolutely do some more targeted, right? If we, if there are certain things, and that's again where I think we'll work with the neighborhoods team and the engagement team in terms of like, what are the topics, the hot topics in different neighborhood areas? And how do we sort of maybe do some more targeted communications with the neighborhood associations and really kind of figure out where their gap analysis is? We can do some of that, yeah.
I think it would be great, because the average is good, but I think if we, for example, if we think downtown people have less gap, again, I'm throwing it like on high-quality service. If you live in downtown, you don't feel that. But if you live maybe in east Bellevue, you feel that gap more, then we can have a more targeted mitigation plan. My last question is, I know this is, as you mentioned, this is mainly happened in the city of Bellevue, like our target audience. And they have a perception of the city that they are living, like assume they are internal stakeholders. Do you see a benefit if actually for this work, we go outside of Bellevue? And we see how people in Seattle, for example, perceive Bellevue? Do you see benefits in that work?
Yeah, our team actually had a robust discussion about that. And really, this work that we did in the just recent outreach is really just foundational. We see that there could potentially be further opportunities in the future to expand and to go out to other audiences and really kind of do a broader assessment. But this was really foundational to us figuring out, okay, what is our, you know, brand within the city? And where can we close that? You know, do we have the gap? Yes, we've got a bit of a gap in a couple of areas, how and how do we close that?
Now, you brought, you said you'd had discussion on this topic. Have you talked about what are the benefits of going maybe to some external stakeholders foresee what, how our brand is perceived?
Yes, absolutely. And I'm happy to take this offline with you as well, deputy mayor, and just kind of talk more in-depth about kind of the different things that came up in our conversation in terms of like, what are those other perceptions from, you know, outside and regionally that exist that we could potentially delve into more and do some targeted outreach beyond Bellevue?
So, my question is, what are the benefits of doing that? Have you guys discussed that?
Oh, got it, yeah.
What are the, some of the top two benefits of going and do this work?
Yeah, and that's really why we started and prioritized really within Bellevue to start, because that's the foundation that we want to build. But certainly, there are benefits to understanding, like what do people think about us outside of the, of the community? Because we are a regional player. We, we take part in things that are beyond the borders of Bellevue, for instance. And so, understanding how we play within that regional landscape is really important to figuring out, okay, how do we communicate? Because when we do communicate, it doesn't stop at our borders either. It goes outside and it goes to the region. Megan and Ian, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else about that?
I think one, one thing that comes to mind for me is, or an opportunity, is in attracting talent, attracting new people to the area from various different professional realms to support different organizations, to support different roles and responsibilities within the city of Bellevue. Getting a perception of external stakeholders allows you to understand, you know, Getting a perception of external stakeholders allows you to understand, you know, what, what opportunities are there for folks who may be considering relocating to Bellevue, either personally or to their business? That's one that comes top of mind for me.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay. Just quickly, you know, one thing that you said stood out to me, that people trust people who look like them. And I was thinking, how do we develop trust with people who look different than us? We're one of the most diverse cities in the country of our size. And, you know, that's finding shared values and common goals, and it's being a city that demonstrates consistency and integrity. And I hope that we are focusing on those two things so that we can earn that trust, because it's just human nature, a basic reflex to trust something that looks more like you're familiar with. But we need to make that effort, and I hope that that's part of this program.
And I, and I think those, those trusted communities that people already have established are pathways into that, right?
Definitely. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to take a break. Come back at 10 till. Study session item, which is information only again. City manager, could you please introduce?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. So we have two items for study sessions, as you said, but several are connected related to our fees, fee updates. The first item is informational, and this is the overview on our mid-biennial budget. We have John Riesha here to, to give that. You heard in July our financial forecast, which indicated we have a, fortunately, we're still seeing bumpy but stable-ish revenues. So in looking at this mid-biennial budget, we do not have large increases we're suggesting. We do not have decreases we're suggesting. So this is not an investment nor a decreasing biennial budget. We're making some, we're proposing to make some technical adjustments, which John and Evan will cover, very, very small in nature, which also is fairly true to most biennial, mid-biennial budget adjustments. So that's kind of the punchline. I think John and Evan will go into a little more detail, but we'd like to share this information with you tonight. They'll talk about the schedule for the mid-biennial update and get some feedback from you. We'll take a break after theirs, and then we'll go into the, the fee adjustment presentations. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. Tonight is usually a great, exciting moment of budget discussions. Unfortunately, as City Manager shared and as we've discussed, this is not that year. We are sitting in the midst of turbulent economic times. We have charted a course during our budget process, and the mid-biennial process is usually about technical adjustments. And that's precisely what this will be, is while we're moving some dollars from one fund or proposing to move from one fund to another, just to make sure that it's in the right accounting place for spending purposes and the appropriation or spending authority is in the right place. That's really what this mid-buy does. It does not change any policy direction. It does not change any service delivery. It just puts the dollars in the right places. Our schedule is tonight, we'll have an overview, and then we'll go into a rates discussion to seek some guidance. On the 12th, we'll be back for our hearing and any additional guidance you will have for us. And then if all goes well, we would be back proposing adoption on November 18th. As I shared very briefly, the nature of this mid-biennium budget really is moving from certain funds to other funds. So there's some negatives or reductions or disappropriations and some increases of appropriation that net out when you move from one side to another or from one fund to another. As we're looking at things, we've got the 1% property tax adjustment that is baked into your original decision of last budget. This, each year, we bring that forward for your action. There'll be some rate adjustments that we'll talk about a little bit later. There are some minor movements of personnel adjustments. In fact, our general wage increase came in almost exactly where we had forecasted it would come in, which turned out to be a really solid piece. So there's very marginal adjustments there. There's some contract adjustments. There are some certain contracts that have gone up or down in cost and value, and just making sure that we're adjusting for those. No difference, certain levels of service or anything different. It really is just the change in the cost of it. And then as we had shifted things around to try and account for the double budgeting issues in the last cycle, there were a few things that we missed that just need to get into the right accounts. And so that's really all that this does. I'm going to ask Evan if I missed anything critical in that?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the key thing to remember here is because we update our health benefit rates and we get new pension rates from the state in July, these are the things that we're truing up for, as well as the collectively bargained contracts that you have all approved. This is just taking the budget action to true those up for the 2026 fiscal year. So a lot of this actually reflects previous council action that is now being actualized as part of the mid-buy. So with that being said, this slide should look familiar to many of you, but perhaps not all of you. This is the 2026 property taxes. As John mentioned, this is something that we have to bring back every year as we have to submit our property taxes, our property tax ordinance to the county by November 30th every year. And we do that one year at a time, even if we've approved a tentative increase for the second year of a biennium budget. What you're looking at here is what we call our penny slide. This shows how the property tax bill gets split for the average property owner. Just for your awareness, the median property now is at $1.58 million in the city of Bellevue, of which that property, that median property, would pay the city in 2026 about $1,500, and that is a $15 increase for that $1.58 million home to account for that 1% adjustment. Key thing to look at here are the other jurisdictions, as you're spreading this out. Other jurisdictions, people ask what that is. That is Sound Transit, that is the Port of Seattle EMS, some of the smaller jurisdictions. King County is what it is. And Bellevue School District in the state of Washington, that reflects 61% of the property tax bill for the city of Bellevue property owners. And all of that is going to education, either to Bellevue School District directly or Isicaw or Renton School Districts respectively, and the state of Washington's education fund. So that's the rough allocation, and this is pretty stable over time. But the one thing that hasn't been stable is that median property assessed value. So with that, I'm going to move us on. Again, we said we would be quick, at least in this portion. I, we're going back to the agenda slide, so we will be back, Sean and I will be back on November 12th with you all as you host a public hearing. And from that, we will have a follow-up discussion to hopefully close out the overview of the mid-biennium and ask for your consideration of direction for November 18th, which is our tentative adoption night. And with that, Mayor, I hand it back to you for questions and discussion.
Okay, great. So we'll go through the council, and if we can keep our comments and questions down to three minutes each, that'd be helpful, because we have a lot more to do tonight. So let's start with Councilmember Vargada.
I can make it just simple. I don't have any questions right now.
Oh, what did you say?
I don't have specific questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John. Thank you, Evan, for the whole finance and asset management team. I think this looks great. It's a technical adjustment, and you guys did a great job and a timely manner. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Just, we'll certainly follow on and be brief. So I think this is really an important effort here. Obviously, I think the community expects us to be responsible and careful with their tax dollars, and I know we all take that very seriously. And it was certainly reflected in the 2024 budget and also currently here in the mid-buy process. So even though we're looking at technical adjustments in advance of our full budget process next year, this is an important body of work, and I look forward to the conversations and collaborations that we're starting now in that effort. Look forward to the public hearing on November 12th and final adoption after that. Between now and the 12th, I'd like to hear from the community and from our staff regarding the best way to support our immigrant and refugee community. Recent federal immigration enforcement actions are directly impacting members of our community, and were not anticipated at the time we adopted the biennial budget. So I'm interested in the council considering directing some of our unallocated council contingency fund to the Human Services Fund for contracted agencies that support members of our community who desperately need support right now. So whether that be in the form of a community navigator position, creation of a rapid response fund, additional legal assistance, or other effort, I'd like to see us provide some much-needed additional support. Just hoping that you could bring back some ideas on how we could do that for us to consider on November 12th. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sumitwaria.
Thank you. Great job on the, on the information and then on the website. I, I love the, how it's allocated different funding that we're able to provide that's actually really clear about where the CIP and other funding is going to directly. Along the line with Councilmember Hamilton was pointed out, I was wondering, is there any way that, because our budget is pretty flat already, is there, instead of giving money, but we give resources? Because I, my understanding is there's actually a lot of nonprofit out there is made for immigration and refugee work. So maybe City Manager can tag in, is there any way we can maybe add on like my Bellevue app, like direct them to resources? Because these are professional people, they know exactly what they're doing. So maybe giving information is, right now is more power, I mean, equally powerful.
Thank you, Councilmember. That is a great point. We do have some linkages that we provide already to websites to direct people to resources, but we can look at some additional ways to do that.
Yeah, can we share with the public comments attendees today, like, you know, Debbie Lacy and others? Maybe they can share with the community, I think it would be helpful, too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. As always, you know, your presentation is very clear, precise, you know, right to the point. So thank you. I do have two questions. When it's on the line of what the Council, you know, Sumitwaria was saying, we, cities not always necessarily be the best providers, you know, because that's not a business. Maybe we should explore, you know, other partners and opportunities, like other nonprofits, you know, helping them, you know, in any way we can. And also, we have other businesses, organizations. I'll just name a few, you know, that, obvious ones, Amazon sticks out. They always are there to help the community. And the community is providing good economy, good business for them, we support them. So there may be some consideration. So I would like to explore what other resources that is relevant, more direct, and easier to, to help, that's what I'm saying, before we go to our community, go to our residents to, you know, to, to, to do this, that's all, relative, explore. Second question is on the 1% adjustment. In the past, I recall that we always want to add 1%, because we're considering the long-term revenue and expense. We feel that sometime we are going to be needing additional money. So we're trying to keep the line from crossing. So my question is, are we still taking this 1% for the same purpose? Have we reached that point? Or are we still just putting there a way for, for in contingency? Or have we actually designated where we're going to spend the money? So I would like to see if you can tell me that.
Councilmember, during our last forecast and our last budget process and the current forecast, which is a continuation of that, what we're experiencing is a downturn in our other tax revenues, and the lines have crossed. We're currently in a dip in revenues that has caused many jurisdictions around us to cut programs and cut staff. We've utilized our cash reserves and are relying on small adjustments like the 1% adjustment to help us ride through the dip as we see things ride back up. And so this is anticipated because the lines have crossed, Councilmember.
Something I would also add, Councilmembers.
That's, that's new information, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I would also say the 1% is also, we've talked in past conversations about how we are becoming more reliant on sensitive revenue sources like our BNO and our sales tax. Property tax is definitely one of the most stable, if not the most stable, revenue source. So keeping that 1% helps balance our revenue portfolio in a way that's a little less economically sensitive. And you've also asked in terms of where this funding is going, I would point out that about 41% of the property tax increase goes to voter-approved levies like our Park, our 2022 Parks Levy and our Fire and Transportation levies.
The question I really am interested, which I think the answer is, do we already have designated where it goes, which is being there, right? So Sunday, to me, you said, it's already crossed, and we know exactly what the 1% will go to.
It is programmed into our general fund.
Okay. But that's a designated purpose for it, we know, right? We know how it's going to need it to be spent.
We know how it is needed to be spent, but Councilmember, I will share, we do not specifically designate the general fund dollars. We utilize those to meet our general government needs.
Sure, sure. Maybe I can speak with you offline.
I would love to.
Second question may be offline as well. We have bank capacity as well. Are we considering that, or just going to state bank capacity?
During the mid-biennium budget process, we had not been asked to consider bringing bank capacity forward. As part of your retreat and your future discussions, you will be looking at some options on some of the gaps and where you want to invest in as part of a regular budget process for the next year.
Okay. That means what you're saying, we are, financial position is getting less and less, what's the, what's the name? A position is getting tighter and tighter. We may be, it may be necessary for us to consider the bank capacity. In the past, we have so much revenue coming in, we're in a much better position financially, maybe that's the right word. We would not have to consider bank capacity. So what you're saying is that the financial condition we're in now is getting to be less and less rosy. So we may need to consider the bank capacity, is that right? Or not? Which is a exceptional situation.
I think we have gone through the worst of the bumpiness.
Okay.
And we're hoping that we're on, we're finding that bottom and starting to rise. There's a larger economic climate. That is a question that I think you'll have to wrestle with relative to the types of services or types of gaps that you and the community see.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great presentation. Thank you so much for the quick update. Appreciate my colleagues' comments on this thus far as well. Property taxes, if it wasn't already in your plan, I do believe that should be a separate vote on November 18th, as we have done in prior years, getting head nods, thank you. And I just want to reaffirm that technical adjustments, so no program is being cut in 2026, right? No program, no service? Great, great. One thing that I would also like for my colleagues to consider, although, and this is probably not the appropriate time, but I know that Director Horne has been doing a lot of great work in terms of continuing to improve and streamline our permitting process. I would like to hear back during, either during the 12th or during the 18th in terms of, are there any additional resources that she might need in order to continue that very important process of, again, improving and streamlining our permitting process? If there are additional resources needed, I would like my colleagues to consider dipping into our council contingency funds to help shore up those efforts. So would that be something that we would discuss now or at a later date?
I think we would be happy to bring back information at a later date, but also to remind you, Councilmember, in addition to our council contingency, Development Services has both a contingency and reserve that is generated has both a contingency and reserve that is generated through some of the peak times of development, and they're very judicious and careful about keeping that reserve to ride through some of the economic times, and from time to time, using that for these types of expenses.
Well, if they come back and say, "We don't need it," that's great. But I want, I want some assurances that they have everything that they need in order to, to get that, that important work done. And then lastly, did you see the letters that came in from AT&amp;T and I think a couple other wireless providers that had concerns regarding the fee adjustments around right-of-way?
I have heard that they came in, I have not yet seen a copy of them. I'm waiting to see a copy of them, and I do know that we need to have a conversation with staff and council around that specific before you're ready for actual, any action on that.
The next topic, I think we're going to be talking about small wireless facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
In the next.
Yeah, that is right. I just want to make sure that we're not hurting the companies that are either doing business or want to do business in the, in the city of Bellevue, so would like additional information there to ensure that, also, I think that, you know, staying within the RCWs that they referenced as well in terms of the types of fees we can or cannot add during that, I guess that permitting process for those right-of-way areas, so something else I'd be interested in learning more about. Thank you so much.
Okay, so maybe we can have that conversation when we are at the next item D, if we want to talk about that anymore. So I find it really interesting that 61% of Bellevue property taxes go to public education. That's pretty amazing. We have, like, Bellevue School District is the best in Washington State, so thank you to all the ratepayers. Four things, I noticed in here in this mid-buy budget that we are anticipating a general wage increase and cost of living adjustment, and I also know that council does not get that. And what we have found in the past is we wait 10 years and everybody's woefully underpaid and we have to go through the salary commission and have this conversation, and it's a big deal, and I think Councilmember Suma Duriya was on that commission before she was a council member. So I would like to bring forward a discussion on how we would put in a cost of living, an automatic cost of living increase into council salary, if that's something we want to do. I also appreciate the request for different uses of the council contingency, so I'd like to make sure that we have a separate discussion on council contingency and all the things we could do with that. Number three, I really love the navigator idea, the human service navigator idea, and getting something like that on my Bellevue app, so would love to get more information on the feasibility of that. And then, I appreciate the permitting recommendations, and so I'd like to hear if Development Services has the funding for that and if they think that that would be a valuable use of it, so that's, I appreciate that. And let me just see if there's anything else I was going to say. I think that was it. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, so we can move on to item C. City Manager, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the next presentation, we have Lucy Liu, Director, yep, there we go, Director of our Utilities Department. She will cover the proposed 2026 sewer rate increase. Lucy?
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm going to introduce very quickly, we'll have a discussion of the utility sewer rates, then followed by Development Services permits and school impact fees, and then transportation wireless fees. Leading that off, as we step into this, all of these rate adjustments are based off of current methodologies, and they're, they're technical in nature, but there are some ups and some downs in this conversation. And I'll turn to Director Liu.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. This evening, I want to review on one technical aspect of adjustment to the city's 2026 sewer rate, primarily to reflect the higher wholesale costs that Bellevue will pay King County for wastewater treatment. The Bellevue's adopted 2026 sewer rate had planned for a 7% cost increase from King County to Bellevue for wastewater treatment. Earlier this year in May, the King County Wastewater Treatment Division Director briefed council on King County's proposed 2026 sewer rate in their long-term forecast, and consistent with that May briefing, the King County Council adopted a higher wholesale wastewater treatment cost increase of 7.5% instead of the 7% that was planned in the city's adopted budget in 2026 sewer rate. As utilities is funded by rates, these higher wholesale costs would require an additional 0.3% increase in Bellevue's 2026 sewer rate, so from the adopted rate of 7.6% to 7.9%. This adjustment is consistent with city financial policy, which directs all wholesale costs to be passed through to our ratepayers, and that is so that local operations and programs are not degraded by regional cost increases. This enables us to continue service delivery to the community. Esken County's forecasted rates are expected to rise over the coming years. We will be reviewing future wastewater wholesale treatment costs with council next year as part of the upcoming 27, 28 budget process. I want to note that there are no proposed changes to the 2026 adopted rates for Bellevue's water or stormwater utilities.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Members of the Council, Rebecca Horner with Development Services. We have a bit of a team effort this evening, so with me is Jake Kesselgesser with Development Services, Vanessa Humphries and Cassie Davis with Transportation. So tonight, we will give you, we're very excited to give you a development update, some development activity update, as well as an update on our cost of service study. We will also update you on school impact fees, and then round it out with an update on telecommunications and wireless fees from transportation. So with that, I will pass it to Jake to give us the development update.
Great, thanks, Rebecca. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. Great to be with you this evening. I'll kick us off with the development update, starting first with this slide that may look familiar, which shows our permit application and issued permit volumes, the top line representing applications, the bottom line representing issued permits. The story in 2025 is still pretty robust, permit activity happening within the pipeline, albeit that we've seen some slowdown with the major projects over the past couple of years. Difficult financing conditions, high construction costs and interest rates have made many of those projects not move out to construction. That's really signified in this next chart, which is our building valuation data. This chart shows the value of issued building permits by the different segments of our building permit populations, starting at the bottom with new single-family, single-family alterations or additions in that maroon color, the dark blue pattern is commercial alterations or tenant improvements, and then the striped pattern at the top are the major projects. And as you can see, in 2024 and 2025, we just haven't seen those major projects moving out to construction for those reasons that I mentioned earlier, and that's very visible in the community, especially in our growth centers with the lack of tower cranes. We do have a very robust development pipeline. To give you a flavor of what that looks like, we have a very high level of residential permitting within the pipeline, just to look at one segment of that of our building permits. The single-family market remains very strong, both for new single-family and reinvestment. We're starting to see middle housing interest, I believe we have 17 permits that have come in the door for middle housing, so that's a good sign. We have over 6,100 multifamily units in for building permit review, so as those financing conditions get better, we, we have housing in the pipeline to push out to construction, so looking forward to economic conditions, rightsizing. Wanted to touch on our Affordable Housing Fee Reduction Program briefly. This has been a very successful program. We've had 461 units qualified under this program, receiving the benefit of lower fees for permit activity, at least 240 units in the pipeline that, that may grow, so looking forward to this program's success in the future. The bridge project here is one of those projects that qualified for permit fee reductions. As we've experienced a little bit of slowdown, heard from some of the comments tonight, Development Services has been focused keenly on process improvement over the last couple of years. We do this by centering the voice of the customer through a couple of different forums, our Bellevue Development Committee, our Customer Experience Program, and recently, this past weekend, we held a permitting expo here at City Hall where we had over 300 members of the community come, ask us questions, provide feedback, and gave us some areas of challenges and opportunities. We hear a lot about permit streamlining, just to give you a few examples of things that we are working on in this arena, our Small Business Program, which we're in the process of standing up right now to bring more resources to small businesses at the front end of the permitting process, trying to make that a little bit simpler and easier for small businesses who may lack the resources or expertise to navigate that permitting process. Very excited, innovated, innovation partnership with GovStream AI that we announced earlier this year, where we're partnering with a local startup to streamline the entire ecosystem of permitting. We're in the early stages of this pilot, showing some great success. We have lofty goals underneath this pilot, one of which is to cut permit review cycles by upwards of 50%, so we're looking to report on that back to the council and the public as we make additional progress in that venue. Another area where we hear a lot of feedback is around consistency, predictability, building a more responsive and transparent permitting process. So just a couple of quick examples include a new onboarding program that we rolled out this year for staff, so think about additional training to prepare them for serving the community, as well as performance system improvement. When I say system, I'm not talking about technology, but the rigor by which we review metrics and ensure that we're actually delivering the process that the community expects of us. We have another project underway right now, which will conclude in 2026, where we're standing up public-facing performance dashboards to really break down the entire permitting process and report on our performance against established targets. Some of you may remember last year's Senate Bill 5290 coming through, we do publish a static report on just those segment of permits. This is going a step beyond that, reporting on the entire permitting lifecycle for all of our permits in a very transparent way to the public. So shifting gears into the financial portion of the presentation, I'd like to start with our cost recovery objectives. This is what really sets the policy direction for Development Services. These objectives have been in place since the early 2000s, and I'll start by saying that Development Services operates under a full-cost recovery model. We receive revenue from two sources, the fees and rates we charge to customers, and for certain services, we receive a small subsidy from the general fund. For land use, discretionary review, engineering review, and inspection, all the boots on the ground out there in the field, our technical and administrative support, so permit processing, finance, technology, all of those services are 100% supported by the fees and rates we charge to our customers. For pre-submittal support, public information, policy, development, code compliance, and programs like our Affordable Housing Fee Reduction Program and Small Business Programs, those are funded through the general fund. Each year, we conduct a very in-depth cost of service study, and we apply a set of financial management guiding principles that have served us well for many years now, the first of which is that our funding structure should support Development Services through economic cycles. We do this by setting aside reserves and contingencies for things like core staffing, technology replacement, and to get us through periods of time where economic uncertainty is, is occurring, and to retain core staffing to be ready to respond to development when that comes back. Permit applicants should pay for the services they receive, that's why we conduct the annual cost of service study. Fees should be predictable and understandable, and each year, we conduct a little bit of regional benchmarking. We have seen some sharp increases by some of our neighboring jurisdictions, King County being one of which, that raised the rates by 49% last year. In terms of our proposed fee adjustments, there's three main fees that we charge, as outlined in the agenda memo and Attachment A. Our hourly rates, which we're proposing updates to those, and also our flat fees, which we charge for some of the quicker turnaround permits, and then our building valuation fees, which are based on the International Code Council's building valuation data, which we adopt and then modify for regional conditions, and then we adjust the fee table for those building valuation permits by CPIW, as outlined in the fee ordinance. The proposed hourly rates are shown in this chart here for land use, fire, transportation, and utilities, review and inspection. You see the 2025 adopted rate, and then the 2026 proposed rate. Rate increases range from 7.1% to 9.6%. Cost drivers behind this include personnel costs, MNO expenses, citywide overhead costs such as facilities and technology replacement projects, as well as allocation of three of our vacant positions to support more continuous improvement work in our Business Services and Land Use Division. Couple of quick examples on the fees for flat fees, we see here a tenant improvement example for land use review and fire review going up by $121 and $88 respectively, and then for valuation-based example for a minor commercial project going up by $365, and single-family addition of 500 square feet going up by $197. Spoke about regional competitiveness, we benchmark against our neighboring jurisdictions, so here we see where Bellevue sits in the region for a $100,000 tenant improvement project with respect to Seattle, King County, Redmond, Kirkland, and Issaquah. Seattle, Bellevue, King County, and Redmond are all full-cost recovery, while Kirkland and Issaquah do receive subsidy from their general fund to support permitting services. And with that, I'll turn it back to Rebecca to talk about school impact fees.
Thank you. So with us tonight is Matt Feldmeyer, he's virtual. He is the Executive Director of Ritten's Capital Planning and Construction Team. Issaquah School District was not able to attend. School impact fees are one of those fees that we collect as a pass-through fee. What that means is we collect it on behalf of the school district and pass it to them once it's collected. We collect them for single-family and multifamily residential units, and they're based on capital facilities plans, and you actually do have a copy in your, in your desk packets of the capital facility plans for both Ritten and Issaquah's school capital facilities. For reference, we have four school districts in Bellevue. They are shown here in this map, Bellevue, Lake Washington, Issaquah, and Ritten School District, and of these, only two collect school impact fees, and that is Ritten and So these are the proposed upcoming fees, and as you can see, they are all eliminating all of their fees, which is likely due to a lack of planned new capital facilities in their districts. So with that, I will pass it to Vanessa for the transportation update.
Good evening. We're here tonight to discuss our Transportation Fee Ordinance, which proposes to formally adopt existing telecommunication wireless lease fees into a fee schedule. Wireless lease fees are charged to telecommunication carriers when they want to make use of city-owned assets, such as mounting small cell wireless equipment to a city streetlight, or placing wireless communications ground equipment in the public right-of-way. The code authority to charge lease fees for these purposes was established many years ago under Title VI of Bellevue City Code. The methodology for calculating the small cell wireless fees was also established years ago along with the small cell wireless program. As such, this fee ordinance is an administrative action to formalize fees by ordinance so that they are visible and predictable to the carriers. If directed, the plan is to return next month to seek approval of the ordinance, and the 2026 fees will then be published on the city's website so that the communications providers can easily find the current rates. And with that, I'll turn it to Cassie, so she can give more information on the, the lease fees.
Thank you, Vanessa. We are presenting on three fees tonight, two fees that are related to small wireless facilities, and one fee that is related to wireless communication facilities in the public right-of-way. The fees related to small wireless facilities are calculated and adjusted annually using the consumer price rates from October. So the rates shown here on this slide are for 2025, and the 2026 rates will be calculated in November after the October CPI rates are published and will come into effect January 1st of 2026. Both, both fees related to small wireless facilities are optional fees. The city facilities access fee provides the option for carriers to utilize city electrical infrastructure to power their privately-owned small cell wireless equipment. privately-owned small cell wireless equipment. This fee is charged annually on a per-site basis. The pole reservation fee provides the option for the wireless carrier to reserve a city-owned streetlight pole prior to submitting a small wireless facility permit application. The pole reservation provides assurance to the carrier during the scoping and design phase so they can conduct the necessary studies at a particular site and not run the risk of the pole being taken by another carrier. The pole reservation fee is charged on a per-occurrence basis and is charged to the carrier when the permit is issued. Now, the wireless communication facility annual lease fee will apply only to new wireless communication facility sites in the public right-of-way. This fee does not affect existing sites or replacement structures at existing sites. The lease fees for existing sites are subject to the rates in their site-specific agreements, lease agreements. The wireless communication facility annual lease fee is also subject to negotiation between the city and the carrier per state law. So we do intend for this rate to be the starting point for site-specific negotiations. The wireless communication facility annual lease fee is also regionally competitive. It was recently updated in February of 2025, using a comparative analysis of wireless fees in other local jurisdictions. For more background information and how these fees are calculated, please refer to the information in the Agenda Memo as well as Attachment B. So in closing, we ask that you consider directing staff to return at a future meeting with legislation to adopt fee and rate adjustments pertaining to utility sewer rate, Development Services permits, and school impact fees, and transportation wireless fees. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor and Council, for further questions.
Terrific, and you put the slide up of exactly what I was going to say. So that's great. So we will be making decisions tonight and giving direction, but I'll give everybody a chance to comment or ask questions. We'll start with Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Just wanted to kind of touch on the sewer rate adjustment briefly first. And I know how sensitive our ratepayers are to utility rate increases, and what could appear to be a small increase can make a big impact on some of our ratepayers' budgets. I'm also aware that Director Lou and her team share that sensitivity to rate increases and do everything possible to smooth rate increases when they have to occur, and make every effort to keep them as low as possible. Keeping utility rates low in Bellevue is truly a group effort, and I think this is all the more important considering the growing need to make significant improvements to drinking water, wastewater treatment, and sewer infrastructure over the next few years. The city code rightly directs us to set rates that cover all costs of the utility. So while I know that this increase will impact our ratepayers now, the system we have in place keeps rates as low as absolutely possible into the future. I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues, though ready to move forward on implementing the proposed rate adjustment. And as it relates, then, to the other topics covered, certainly that's a great presentation. I really appreciate the detail, appreciate the focus on continued improvement efforts that streamline and improve our permitting process. It's thanks to this effort and others, I think Bellevue is becoming the leader in quick and efficient permitting. I'd like to continue to support and invest in those efforts so that we continue to speed up our permitting process and help bring critically needed development projects online even quicker. And I think that we could and should become the area leader in permitting efficiency. So ready to move forward on that one as well, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Love the part about the permitting. That's great. I'd still like you to come back and make sure that indeed you have everything that you need to continue that great work and that great program. You know, part of that, too, is, and I'm glad you mentioned about kind of the educational and training part to it, because, you know, too often there seems to be at times a disconnect between interpretation of the code, so whatever that might be. So really appreciate that, but again, would like to have that considered. But I'm going to ask the same question I asked before about some of the concerns by our wireless carriers in the region. I don't know if you had an opportunity to read their concerns. I know that one specifically asked that, and I believe this is per state law, that a city may not charge a right-of-way fee for a facility attached to a replacement pole of no more than 60 feet in height. I'm assuming we've taken that into consideration already, but there's some other questions in here, too, that I would like to get an answer to. If you're not prepared to do that tonight, that's fine, but I would like to understand their concerns a little bit more vis-à-vis our rate increases. And I want to make sure we're also being a good partner to our carriers and tech partners in our city. This is, you know, economic development issue as well, so at least for me, it is. Let's see, I had one other comment, and now I can't remember what it was. Oh, the increases to, let me just bring this up here so I get the language right, but the increases, and I know they're, I believe, pass along, right, in terms of the cost for our utilities. I also would like to get some information, Lucy, regarding maybe expanding, if I remember the last time you had a presentation, the fund that we had for assistance for, those were impacted by the increase in utility rates. But I think we had a sizable amount left over, if I remember correctly, because it was very narrowly defined in terms of who would be eligible for that relief. Would it be possible with these continuous increases to kind of expand the criteria for rate relief of residents who are impacted by these increases? As Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, it's an ongoing increase, especially those for on very limited budgets and fixed income. Every one of these increases potentially could mean they're doing without something. So is that a possibility that we can do for 2026?
Excuse me. Absolutely. Sorry.
That's okay. I'll keep talking if you want to catch.
I think I got it. Thank you. Actually, we have been thinking a lot about affordability and residents of our community who are facing financial hardship and need help paying their bills. We do plan to bring back, to council, we're thinking in the spring, some policy options to consider expanding our rate assistance program to help more low-income residents, including looking at our eligibility requirements and looking at how we might be able to possibly consider expanding our long-term assistance in addition to the short-term assistance programs that we provide.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Sumidwarya.
Hi. Thank you for the update. I was just about to open my Bellevue app, actually, to check what we have out there, just to make sure. So with the residence assistant, it's really, it's like similar line. Can we add it onto the Bellevue app? So it's like a one hub portal that they can get all the information for the navigator, like the mayor's idea? Is that possible? Okay. And then one other question I have about the utility rates, the fee rates, because I can imagine the residents must be anxious about the rate because it's going to the budget. Is there any way we can work with the community engagement team to like, kind of explain the reason in a more plain English way, where so they can understand, like, the reason behind it?
Absolutely. We'll make sure to do that.
Okay. And then the next question is for the development dashboard. I'm actually really intrigued about how we can see exactly where a step is away. So I think that because when you're building a new TI for any type of businesses, there's multiple player and then in the team, right? There's the plumber, there's the electrician, there is the architect. On the dashboard, would there be any capacity to able to see exactly where it's updated? Like which contractor is on? The reason I ask is because sometimes, for example, for the signage, when they apply for it, sometimes it's not our permitting process holding it back. It could be the vendor who's holding, not turning the information on time. So is there a capacity like that? We can see where the bottleneck is? So can we can have a more clear SOP for the TI process where the business who's applying know exactly when they're going to be able to open, and so they can be keeping up to their operational plan?
Yeah. So a couple thoughts on that. The performance dashboard that we're looking to stand up is specific to just permitting timelines, but I think where your feedback fits is with the rebuild of the front end of mybuildingpermit.com, which you all have supported. Another state funding ask within the legislative agenda for that. I believe that project is set to kick off at the beginning of next year, and we've had a lot of discussion about two-way communication with customers through that portal as that rebuild happens. That's definitely one of the things that we've been hearing from customers, and Bellevue has folded into the requirements for that rebuild.
Great. Amazing, because I think for you see, it's more predictable when they're going to be grant opening a store per se, and then so it helps them to save costs, and then so allocate the marketing money more on the point where economy is. And then my next question is for the school impact fee. This is more clarifor question. I'm just, when a city doesn't charge that, does it affect the quality of education?
So the school district goes through a capital facility planning process to determine what they need in their capital facilities. It might be expansions to existing facilities or new facilities entirely. They base that on enrollment and need. So when they determine what they need, they put it in their capital facilities plan, which is what you have copies of. And those two districts in our city have chosen to charge school impact fees, but given their capital facility programs, they're telling us this next year, they do not need to charge impact fees.
Okay. So it doesn't really, it's going to reflect on quality of.
No. And Matt Feldmeyer is online if he wanted to add anything to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, maybe he doesn't. Councilmember Bargava. Oh, wait, is there a stirring from online?
Sorry, yes, I am online. Our capital facilities plan was, has gone down to a $0 impact fee for the Renton School District, mostly due to the lack of enrollment growth that we are projecting moving forward over the next six years. We do have capital improvement projects coming online right now. We just have none of those that are related specifically to growth, which is a requirement for impact fees to be charged. So that's why they went to $0.
Thank you. Great. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, Councilmember Bargava.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the presentations across the board. Starting with the sewer utility fee. So I do sort of acknowledge the sensitivity we have in the community for rate increases. And I also really appreciate the comments prior, which is going to be my question around assistance programs. So I'm excited to hear that there is going to be opportunity to look at those at a future date to see what you can do. One of the things sort of came around in question, I think, in Councilmember Sumidwarya's comments was the implications are clear, but of not doing something like this, what if we do not do a rate increase? What would be the implications? Is there a simple response that you can provide that allows, bring it to life, why this is really important?
Councilmember, we are required to pass those fees through. We are, because we are the transaction point, we actually have to pass those through. We could make a choice as a jurisdiction to pay all of those costs ourselves with our general fund, but they are costs that because we are the utility and we are buying in at that capacity, and our policy is rate recovery, we do have to pass those costs through.
Okay, I appreciate that. On the permitting piece, I really appreciate the push for technology and the AI improvements to try and accelerate the process. I love the aggressive targets of 50%. I also love the idea of transparency. One quick question on the benchmarks that you had put out. When you compared against other jurisdictions in that slide that you had, are those benchmarked post the increase or currently?
Those are 2025 rates, Councilmember.
Okay. So this, that may change a little bit post-increase. Is that right?
That is correct. We do know, for example, City of Seattle is proposing an 18% increase this year. I'm not sure where they stand with their council. Not sure about Renton and, I mean, Redmond, I'm sorry, and also King County. As I mentioned, King County did a pretty steep increase last year to catch up with their cost recovery objectives. We do the incremental increases every year to stay in line with our cost recovery policies.
Got it. Okay. And then school impact fees, my questions are answered, and so on the transportation wireless fees as well. Mayor, I do have one comment on the prior agenda item. Probably to make it now or not?
Sure.
I just wanted to plus one Councilmember Hamilton's push on the contingency fund valuation for human services. Just want to nudge and say that I would be supportive, and I would love to see what the options are there as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Well, this is something that's interesting to consider. Some of the things out of our control. I want to talk about utility sewer rate first. I think we have one of the best utility in the area. They have been very diligent. They make sure that we have policies that the council approved, that is how to raise the rate and how to have a reserve so that we don't run into a situation that, you know, we have a rundown system, we have contingencies to make sure that we have reserve to repair them, to keep up with the state of the situation, that we're prepared for growth. So all this are very good contingency plans. Of course, we cannot be perfect, right? I mean, we just have to anticipate, but I think they're doing the best they can. So I think they are containing the rates within good reason. They're well-run, very efficient. We turn on the water tap, clean weather come out, we flush toilet, dirty water goes away. So I have no problem of, you know, supporting the rate proposal. I have a question. I just heard Councilmember Bargava was asking about pass-through. Is that pertaining to utility? John?
Yeah. Actually, it can pertain to utilities or the school impact fees.
Okay. I want to mention about utility. It's the King County's waste treatment cost. It has to pass through. I mean, we can absorb it. I mean, we have to, we have to, because nobody's going to pay it. Our ratepayer has to pay for it. So there's not much we can do about it. And it's dependable, dependent on the county's sewer cost and what they're going to charge us, how much they're going to increase. So that's a very tough predicament. I want to remind the council that we have to be working on the regional basis, making sure that the waste treatment division of King County, you know, can control their costs, making sure their cost covers, or the growth, or the old pipes that need to be replaced. Their policy is not quite as good as we do. They don't have a reserve. They don't plan for the long term. So the increase will happen when they have to pay for broken pipes, they have to replace whatever they have to do, keep up with the new regulations. So that's something we have to be very careful about. So I'm just sort of warning every city, us included, what the potential increase may become, unless we figure out how to contain King County's rate system. Okay, so that's good. So I support that. I want to mention about Development Services permit. I think they're doing a very good job. They're responding to what the development community wants. I want to compliment the director for communicating with development. But we have seen that the last time we talked about middle housing, one of the challenges that we want to build as low cost as possible, one of the cost factor is the time it takes. that we want to build as low cost as possible, one of the cost factor is the time it takes to get permits. You know, somebody was being, the development people are saying developers, takes three years. So we want to shorten that, right? Because time is money. It's going to cost more money, and the cost's going to go up. So we need to do everything we can to shorten it, and I believe that you're working toward that with the technology improvement and all the other things, but there may be other things you can do, we don't know that. One thing is that there needs to be certainty. One thing that makes development difficult, especially for residential small businesses, that inspection sometimes and the requirements sometimes do not always well-explain, well-coordinated. So there's misunderstanding between customer and also the development services, you know, we're not on the right page. So this misunderstanding, not, you know, so this, the city has many inspection requirements also from different departments. So I think we need to make sure that we're all on the same page, so we don't, we eliminate the misunderstanding and the delaying of the process. Otherwise, I think it's good, you need to have the money, you just find out that you have a reserve on your own. So well, that's something that you can also be, enable you to improve your permitting period, and I think that's important. So I'm, no question about it. In terms of the wireless thing, I have no clue. What is the cost to put a wireless system on up right of way? I mean, I don't know, is it due to competition with other facilities, or due to coal, or due to whatever? So I think you have to decide, you have to look at what, how do we provide service to make sure these wireless service companies provide the service to our customers here? I don't know what they're willing to pay to provide the service, or whether they're not willing to pay. So it depends on, you know, the function, depending on the service the customer in Bellevue can obtain through various different companies. You know, I think that's the competitive force. So I think that you have to decide. So that's my statement. Other than that, I think that's what we're looking at. But I do like to make sure that wireless system has to be available to our customers, and how much can we charge to keep them here? If they go away, that's not good for us, right? Because we don't have the service. We need to have the options, we need the service for our customers, for our residents. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Since Rebecca is here, I'm going to ask my permitting question first. Sorry for moving back and forth between you all. Slide 17, there is a permitting fee, regional competitive. I highly recommend remove those two bottom cities that they are different. We are not comparing apple to orange, they are orange, because if you remove that, then it clearly shows, if someone goes through that slide, if they are not included, we are the lowest. So that's a great picture. But if they are there and there is no description that they are different subsidy and subsidized and everything else, I think that doesn't look great. In the agenda memo was written somewhere that you may reach out to your reserves to avoid in future, to avoid passing the cost to customers. Is that correct? Do we have any regulation? How is that works? What is the threshold that we go to that when we are putting the money back? What are some of the framework? Is it somewhere available, you can send it to us?
So great question, Deputy Mayor. The basic framework for that is in the comprehensive financial policies, which outlines the specific uses of each one of our reserve buckets and how we would actually use those. So for example, one of the reserve buckets is for core staffing to take us through downturns. So if we got into a situation of a significant downturn where revenue is not coming in to support expenditures, we could dip into that reserve to keep those staff on board, to focus on process improvement, have those staff available to be trained when development activity picks back up. That's one of the core uses. We also have a rate offset reserve that could be used in times where we have large rate increases that may be coming to development services to lower the rates and smooth those out over a period of years so that we don't see sharp rate increases like we've seen from some of our neighbors. So those are two examples.
That's awesome. Nothing less was expected. Thank you so much. Then a quick question on the utility pass-through. Is there any detailed calculation to convert the King County increase into Bellevue's 0.3% increase? And let me just rephrase my question. So I know you said King County is charging more, plus taxes. How that translates to Bellevue's 0.3% increment? There is a math behind that, I assume?
It is really just a math, because their rate increase is for all of their customer base to address things like the growth in, and their capital plan for combined sewer overflow and some things that are coming at them. To our ratepayers, it translates to a smaller amount, which is an incremental component, and it's really just a math calculation of, here's the total amount, and then we calculate it based off of our rate calculation, here's your portion of it.
Can we see that for the, or public can see that? Because to me, that's math transconversion is like a black box. So if we can see that trends, like from King County, 3 to the 0.3%, I think would be a good thing for public clarity. And then the last comment would be plus one to Councilmember Hamilton, to Councilmember Noonhouse, or every other councilmembers, that we should think about the impact that all of these increases will do to our low-income folks, renters, small multifamilies, whatever, whoever is going to experience that, we should think about that and do something for them that I'm happy that you are all doing something.
Glad to. And councilmembers, I'm playing the part of Lucy as her voice has taken a further downturn, and I'm just acting as a voice.
You have a big shoes to fill, my friend.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. So, you know, when I'm at these regional meetings and hearing from other cities, Bellevue is so fortunate to have a flat budget right now. I'm hearing from other cities that have significant millions of dollars of deficit because they anticipated having more revenues than they actually got, and so they budgeted for that. And it's really, really tough, and we're very fortunate we're in the situation that we're in, and I think that I'm very grateful for the staff who have been really conservative in their projections and accurate. I'm also feeling really lucky about this development pipeline that you described. That's quite remarkable also, that's quite unique for the region. And when I look at the affordable housing units that are being produced and that are in the pipeline, you know, we as a council recently made a commitment to create 5,700 units of affordable housing in the next 10 years, I think, and so that'd be 570 a year, and we have 700 in the pipeline, so yay, we're on good track right now. Let's see, I kind of going along with what other councilmembers have said, I would love to see the utilities department partnering with our agency human service organizations that do utility assistance so that we're all working together on that, make sure that we have the funding that we need to support that effort and that our funding's being well utilized. And then the last thing outside of this is back to the council contingency conversation, which we are now going to have at some point. We need to also discuss our travel budget for next year, so put that on the list of things to discuss, please. But I'm grateful to be in this situation and that we can take this vote tonight, and so without any other conversation or questions, may I have a motion, please?
I move to direct staff to return with legislation to adopt fee and rate adjustments pertaining to utility sewer rates, development services permits, school impact fees, and transportation wireless fees for council consideration at a future meeting.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you so much. The last thing on our agenda is actually a written report. It's on, so we had a city manager's report a few weeks ago on the East Gate campus of Porchlight and Plymouth Crossing, and at that time, our city manager described some of the recommendations that the city had for the operations of those facilities. And so this written report talks about what actions have been taken to the state, and there is no data to collect yet because they have not been in place, but in early of next year, I believe we'll be bringing this topic back to council with some data to assess.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Noonhouse, for asking for the study session. Yes, we do want to bring a study session back to you when we have some information that shows how effective or not effective the actions are, and get your feedback on that. So we hope to bring that back by early January.
Okay, great. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.